How's your... How's your... My... You good? Wala pa. Hindi, kasi 24 talaga ako.
Oo. May mga marami na... Pagdating sa akin...
Ay!
Oh! No, no, take it, take it, take it was, no problem. Take it or leave it. August, no? August, uh, 4 to 6. So, may kailangan. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Hi.
Salamat ha, thank you.
The session is now called to order. Please stand for the singing of the national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, peras ang silang anan. Alam ng puso sa tipit moy buhay. Lupang hiniram, duyan ka ng magiting. Sa manlulupi, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa lakitong pagka. May nilang ang kula at awit sa paglayang nilawahan. Ang isap ng wata at moy takumpay naratingin. Ang pituwing na paraw niya kailan pa may matidiling. Luban ang araw ng war, aming pagsikap. Uyay yakin sa tipit ko. Amin ligaya dapat may mahati. Ang lalatay ng tali ng sayo.
Please remain standing for the invocation to be delivered by Representative Florida Rita Robes of the lone district of San Jose del Monte City. Please stand, please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the role of members, so move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to call the role of members.
Role call of members. Honorable representatives, Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansha, Asistio, Ataidi, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskoog, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tunggalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Juango Jaime, Ko Juango Mark, Ko Lada, Ko Leantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kua, Quaresma, Dago Dalipe, Dalob, Dayangirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Vinesia, Defensor, Delmar, Delos Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kalib, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavik, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Inu, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagidorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Laksonoel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Limgay Tiong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayab, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Maniquis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Uaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Padiernos, Padwano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Penya, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisas Agabas, Pumarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rekto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Ilohiyo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamarie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salseda, Salid, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulub, Silberio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihang, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maica, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiyanko, Tiyeng, Tolentino, Tulfo Juseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Valariano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows the 309 members responded to the call.
With 309 members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, considering that copies of journal number 76 dated May 23, 2023, and journal number 77 dated May 24, 2023 were already distributed to the members, I move to dispense with the reading of the said journals. I assume, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The journal number 76 and 77 is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, consequently, I move that we approve journal number 76 dated May 23, 2023, and journal number 77 dated May 24, 2023. I assume, Mr. Speaker.
That's already been approved, um, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as the committee reports and communications for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill 8306 Promoting Positive Parenting in All Settings, by Representative Ko Angelika Natasha.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 8307 Amending Abuse Against Chastity by Renaming the Felony to Sexual Harassment by Public Officers, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 8308 Authorizing the DOH to Carry Out Programs and Grants Regarding the Prevention and Management of Asthma and Related Respiratory Problems for Low-Income Families and Communities, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Numbers 8309 to 8311 and 8313 to 8319, Establishing Several Testa Training and Assessment Centers in Camarena Sur, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8312 Granting Benefits and Privileges to Junior Citizens, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 8320 Institutionalizing the Pambansang Pabahay Para Sa Pilipino Program, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 8321 Renaming the Benham Rise as Philippine Rise, or Talampas ng Pilipinas, Naming the Undersea Features Therein, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 8322 Encouraging and Promoting the Use and Development of Satellite-Based Technologies for Internet Connectivity, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 8323 Enhancing Accessibility in the Voting of Senior Citizens, Persons with Disabilities, Pregnant Women and Indigenous Peoples, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 8324 Establishing a Total Ban on the Importation of Wastes, Providing Means for Its Enforcement, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 8326 Creating the Philippine Palm Oil Development Authority, by Representative Sakdalan.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 8328 to Establish a Grant Program to Provide Comprehensive Eye Examinations to Children, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Numbers 8329 to 8333 and 8335 to 8340, Establishing Several Testa Training and Assessment Centers in Camarena Sur, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8334 Declaring the 8th Day of May of Every Year as a Special Working Holiday All Over the Country to Honor the Public Utility Vehicle Drivers, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 8341 Granting Women Equal Opportunity to Athletic Scholarship Enterprises of Sports, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 8342 Strengthening the Philippine Sports Commission, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill Numbers 8343 and 8345, Establishing Several Testa Training and Assessment Centers in Camarena Sur, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8344 Providing for the Evaluation of Public and Private Programs in Order to Reduce the Rate of Teenage Pregnancy, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 8346 Requiring a Report Regarding the Effects of Environmental Factors on Women's Health, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 8347 Creating a National Women's Business Enterprise, by Representative Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond.
To the Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill 8348 Upgrading the Salary Grade of Dentists Employed in the Public Sector, by Representative Hernandez.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 8350 An Act Amending Certain Provisions of RA Number 10121, Entitled "An Act Strengthening the Philippine Disaster Risk Reduction and Management System", Providing for the National Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Framework and Institutionalizing the National Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Plan, Appropriating Funds Therefore and For Other Purposes, by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Ko Elizaldi, Matugas, Suarez and Bungalon.
To the Committee on Disaster Resilience.
House Bill 8351 Declaring the Maramos Section of the Angat River System, Located in San Mateo, Norzagaray, Bulakan, an Eco Tourism Destination, by Representative Plato.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 8352 Requiring and Regulating the Use of Wearable Body Cameras and Dashboard Cameras by Law Enforcement Officers in the Course of Conducting a Search or Making an Arrest, by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8353 Institutionalizing the Expanded Tertiary Education Equivalency and Accreditation Program, by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8354 Amending Certain Provisions of the Oil Pollution Compensation Act of 2007, by Representative Jaresco.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 8355 Establishing OFW Ward, to be known as the Bagong Bayani Ward, in Every Government Hospital, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8356 Exempting Qualified Indigent Filipinos from Payment of Professional Examination Fees, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 8357 Providing for a Magna Cart of Tricycle Drivers and Operators, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 8358 Creating an Agricultural Pension Program to Provide Social Security and Pension Benefits to Farmers and Fisherfolk, by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 8359 Declaring the 5th of May of Every Year as a Local Non-Working Holiday in Dumangas, Iloilo, by Representative Biron.
To the Committee on Local Government.
Resolutions: House Resolution 1014 Directing the House Committee on Energy to Conduct an Investigation Regarding the Compliance of the Department of Energy with its Legal Mandate to Enforce the LPG Industry Regulation Act, by Representative Alvarez Pantalyon.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1017 Congratulating and Commending Nigel Potensoso, Kelly Mae B. Villarin, Lauren Sukano and Leonard Lewin Medel for Placing in the Top 10 of the 2023 Medical Technologist Licenseure Examination, by Representative Rama.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution 1018 Congratulating and Commending Velez College, Cebu Doctors University and Southwestern University Finma for Being Top Performing Schools in the 2023 Medical Technologist Board Exam, by Representative Rama.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Resolution 1019 Urging the House, through the Appropriate Committee, to Conduct an Investigation in the Recent Fire Incident at the Manila Central Post Office, Considering its Significance as an Important Cultural Property, by Representatives De Vinesia, Gomez, Ko Angelika Natasha, Alonte, Rodriguez Rufus, Amentado, Benitez, Ligarda, Maceda, Nograles Margarita, Singson Mihang, Barba, Bautistalin, Delmar, Villarica, Velasco, Bolilia, Ataidi, Versosa, Konghun, Singson Rachel, Veloso Tuazon, Arenas, Fernandez, Barbers, Robes, Vergara, Quaresma, Swansing Michaela Angela, Mercado Revilla, Rama, Zamora Amparo Maria, Villar, Swansing Horasyo, Abante, Castro Jean, Brosas, Manuel, Castro Franz, Nisay, Go Mark and Garcia Jose Arturo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1020 Congratulating and Commending Samuel German, Juliana Shane Sevilla and Joseph Godbout for Winning in the UIPM 2023 Southeast Asia Championships Held in Pattaya, Chonburi, Thailand, on May 19 to 21, 2023, by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1023 Urging the Committee on Health, Committee on Women and Gender Equality and Other Appropriate House Committees to Look into the Increasing Number of Breast Cancer Cases in the Country with the Intent of Supporting Early Detection Programs, Increasing Breast Cancer Awareness and Ultimately Arresting the Third Most Fatal Type of Cancer in the Philippines, by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1024 Directing the Committee on Agriculture and Food, Committee on Energy and Other Appropriate House Committees to Look into Possible Government Interventions in the Light of the Impending Return of El Nino in 2023, by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1025 Directing the Committees on Health, Women and Gender Equality and Sustainable Development Goals to Conduct an Inquiry into the Rights of Maternal Deaths in the Philippines with the End in View of Strengthening and Ensuring Easier Access to Healthcare Services and Programs to Address Maternal Problems, by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1026 Congratulating and Honoring Islay Erica Bomogao for Winning Two Medals in the 2023 International Federation of Muay Thai Associations Senior World Championships Held in Bangkok, Thailand, by Representatives Duterte, Yap Eric and Yap Edvik.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1027 Congratulating and Honoring the Philippine Delegates on the 32nd Edition of the Southeast Asian Games, by Representatives Duterte, Yap Eric and Yap Edvik.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1028 Congratulating and Commending Carlos EDGEL Pokiz Yulo as One of the Best Gymnasts and Most Bemedled Athletes in the Philippines Has Produced, Thereby Honoring the Country with Accolades in His Quest for Excellence in Gymnastics, by Representative Makapagal Arroyo.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message from the Senate, Message dated May 23, 2023, Informing the House of Representatives that On Even Date, the Senate Approved the Conference Committee Report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill 1841 and House Bill 5110.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications: Various Letters, Reports and Emails Submitted by Certain Municipal, City and Provincial Governments Regarding Their Fund Utilization and Status of Program/Project Implementation of the Local Government Support Fund.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated April 12, 2023 of the BIR Commissioners Submitting to the House of Representatives Their Financial Accountability Reports for the Month of March 2023.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated April 28, 2023 of the DOTR Under-Secretary for Administration and Finance Transmitting to the House A Copy of Their Quarterly Report of Revenue and Other Receipts For the Quarter Ending March 31, 2023.
To the Committee on Transportation.
Letter dated May 3, 2023 of the National Youth Commission Chairperson and CEO Informing the House That Their Report on the Utilization of Sanggunan Kabataan Mandatory and Continuuming Training Fund, Statement of Appropriations, Allowments, Obligations, Disbursements and Balances As of Quarter Ending March 31, 2023 Was Posted on Their Website, Transparency Seal On April 27, 2023.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated May 8, 2023 of the NEA Regional Manager Submitting to the House A Copy of the Status of Infrapro procurement Implementation As of April 15, 2023 In the First District of Leyte.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Letter dated May 9, 2023 of the COA Commissioner Officer in Charge Submitting to the House of Representatives A Copy of Their Performance Audit Report of Representatives a copy of their performance audit report entitled "The 10.89 Billion Camp Fund Mitigated the Impact of the Pandemic to the 2.17 Million Beneficiaries, But the Program Implementation Had Faced Key Challenges", and was posted on the COA website.
To the Committee on Public Accounts.
Letter dated May 12, 2023 of the Prime World Digital Systems, Inc. Regulatory Affairs submitting to the House a copy of their annual report for the year ending December 31, 2022.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Various financial and physical reports of operations submitted by the Municipality of Quezon, Province of Nueva Ecija, and Province of Isabela.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Committee Reports. Committee Report 611 submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education on House Bill 8349. Committee Report 612 submitted by the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms on House Bill 8370. Committee Reports 613 to 620 and 621 submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolutions 1030 to 1037 and House Bill 8390 respectively. Committee Report 622 submitted by the Committee on Justice and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill 8392. Committee Reports 623 and 624 submitted by the Committee on Natural Resources and Appropriations on House Bills 8394 and 8395 respectively.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules.
Additional Reference of Business Committee Reports. Committee Report 625 submitted by the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and Appropriations on House Bill 8399. Committee Report 626 submitted by the Committee on Labor Unemployment and Appropriations on House Bill 8400. Committee Report 627 to 630 submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolutions 1043 to 1046 respectively.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to recognize the guests of Representative Dale Corvera from Second District of Agusan del Norte. Ms. Gina Vargas, Head of Student Development, Welfare, and Organization and Conduct; Dr. Natalie Duminar, Principal; Ms. Paz Caluna, PTA President of CSU DLHS.
To the guests of the Honorable Dale Corvera, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we acknowledge the following guests of representative from Bicos Saro Partilis, Congressman Brian Raymond Yamsuan. The guests are Reya Yamsuan, Miko Yamsuan, Priscilla Yamsuan, and Nora Lennon.
To the guests of representative of the Bicos Saro Partilis, Brian Yamsuan, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move with the consideration and third reading of House Bill Number 8325, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 8325 and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 8325, an act establishing the Overseas Filipino Workers Hospital as a Level 3 hospital under the direct supervision and control of the Department of migrant workers and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8325. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcheron, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysayi, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barberz, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Rosas, Buain, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Tagas, Tahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Hardema, Kari, Castro France, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Tungalau, Co. Angelica Natasha, Co. Elizalde, Co. Pilar, Co. Huancoh Jaime, Co. Huancoh Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Carvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuah, Quaresma, Tagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Yuniso, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, D. Faustino Ino, D. Faustino Michael Carlos, D. Ian Paul, Ecleo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Udella, Pariñas, Fernández, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Cortés, Frasco, Presnedi, Cuentebelia, Gallos, García Albert, García Dante, García José Arturo, García María Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Gerdiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gómez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Neptali, Gonzales Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Tagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Corribata, Javier, Co. Olga, Co. Ricardo, Co. Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lacson, Lacson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Clara, Lazatin, Di, Legarda, Libanan, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Duistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernández, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercador Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisai, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Oaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuon, Ordanes, Ortega, Owano Dizon, Padhernos, Padwano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Remisas Agabas, Humarin, Puno, Himbo, Rama, Recto, Rehencha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robez, Rodriguez Yulojio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Ieda Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakalluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangan, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihán, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Huatco, Tariela, Teodoro, Heves Arnulfo, Heves Jose, Tianco, Teng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joselyn, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Utor, Di, Umalí, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Verzosa, Bilia, Bilia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Bilia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villaraza Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christian Tel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jayzel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to recognize the guests of Representative Dale Corvera from Second District of Agusan del Norte. Ms. Gina Vargas, Head of Student Development, Welfare, and Organization and Conduct; Dr. Natalie Duminar, Principal; Ms. Paz Caluna, PTA President of CSU DLHS. Co. Huancoh Jaime, Co. Huancoh Mark, Dayanghirang, De Venesia, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Duavit, Duterte, Garin, Gasataya, Gómez, Guico, Javier, Labad Labad, Legarda, Libanan, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernández, Martínez, Mendoza, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nolasco, Paglas, Plato, Rama, Roman, Romero, Sakdalan, Santos, Saulog, Singson Richel, Suarez, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Heves Arnulfo, Teng, Tolentino, Di, Unabia, Vergara, Bilia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Bilia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villaraza Suarez.
With 255 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill Number 8325 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move with the consideration and third reading of House Bill Number 8204, copies of which were distributed to all our members. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is erected to read the title of House Bill Number 8204 and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 8204, a not providing the regulatory framework to conserve, protect, restore, and sustainably manage splitlands and their resources to enhance the country's resilience to climate change. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number...
Mr. Speaker, point of order. You cannot hear what is being read for a third reading. Can the Secretary read it loud and clear so that everyone here will be able to vote in accordance to what the bill is? Can our Speaker direct now the Secretary to read loud and clear what is to be voted on third reading? Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. The Secretary is directed to read the title and the voting louder, please.
House Bill 8204, a not providing... House Bill eight two zero four, an act providing the regulatory framework to conserve, protect, restore, and sustainably manage splitlands and their resources to enhance the country's resilience to climate change. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number eight two zero four. Abalos. Abante. Abunda. Acharon. Asidre. Akop. Adyong. Advincula. Agarau. Alba. Albano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Jose. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Ang. Angara. Aquino. Aquino Magcaysay. Arbison. Arenas. Arrogansha. Asistio. Atide. Omentado. Balindong. Barba. Barbers. Baronda. Barzaga. Bascub. Bautista. Bautistalim. Benitez. Pernos. Biliones. Pirón. Bolilia. Bondok. Bungalon. Bordado. Bosita. Briones. Rosas. Buain. Bulut Bektang. Bustos. Cabredo. Cagas. Kahayon Uy. Calderon. Calixto. Campos. Kawagdan. Cardema. Kari. Castro Franz. Castro Jean. Celeste. Chan. Chato. Tua. Tungalau. Co Angelica Natasha. Co Elizaldi. Co Pilar. Cohuancohame. Cohuancohmark. Colada. Coliantes. Corvera. Cruz Ambrosio. Cruz Ricardo. Puah. Quaresma. Tagoo. Dalipe. Dalob. Dayanghirang. Daza. Jesus. De Venesia. Defensor. Delmar. De Los Santos. Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid. Dimaporo City Amina. Dionisio. Domingo. Duavit. Duhalii. Duterte. Di Faustino Ino. Di Faustino Michael Carlos. Di Ian Paul. Ecleyo. Emano. Enverga. Escudero. Espares. Espina. Estrella. Yudella. Farinyas. Fernandez. Ferrer Antonio. Ferrer Juliet Marie. Flores. Cortez. Frasco. Presnedi. Fuente Bella. Gallegos. Garcia Albert. Garcia Dante. Garcia Jose Arturo. Garcia Maria Angela. Garcia Pablo John. Garcia Vincent. Gardiola. Garin. Gasataya. Gato. Go Ed Christopher. Go Mark. Goles. Gomez. Gonzaga. Gonzalez Aurelio. Gonzalez Neptali. Gonzalez Sandro. Goriseta. Gico. Ginto. Gulyas. Gutierrez. Hagedorn. Jaresco. Hataman. Hernandez. Herrera. Horibata. Javier. Co Olga. Co Ricardo. Co Wilton. Cong Hun. Labadlabad. Lakson. Lakson Noel. Lagman. Lagon Daphne. Lagon Sani. Lara. Lazatin. Lee. Legarda. Libanan. Limkaytong. Loyola. Luistro. Lumayag. Makapagal Arroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Magsino. Malapitan. Mangawang. Manikiz. Manuel. Maranyon. Marcoletta. Marcos. Mariano Hernandez. Mariño. Marquez. Martinez. Mastura. Matibag. Matugas. Mendoza. Mercado. Mercado Revilla. Miguel. Momo. Morden. Nava. Nisai. Noel. Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe. Nograles Margarita. Nolasco. Huaminal. Olaso. Olivares. Ongchuan. Ordanes. Ortega. Uano Dizon. Padiernos. Paduano. Paglas. Palma. Panaligan. Pancho. Panotes. Pascual. Peña. Pimentel. Plaza. Plato. Primias Agabas. Humaren. Puno. Kimbo. Rama. Recto. Regencia. Remulia. Revilla Brian. Revilla Ramondjolo. Reyes. Rilyo. Rivera. Robes. Rodriguez Ilohiyo. Rodriguez Rufus. Roman. Romero. Romualdes Ferdinand Martin. Romualdes Yedamarie. Romualdo. Romulo. Roque. Sactalan. Sagarbaria. Sacaluran. Salceda. Sali. Salimbahon. Salo. Salvame. Santos. Saulog. Silverio. Singson Richel. Singson Ronald. Singson Mihan. Solon. Suwan. Suansing Horacio. Suansing Michaela Angela. Suarez. Talliado. Tamayo. Tambunting. Tan Joseph. Tan Keith Micah. Tan Reynolds Michael. Tan Samir. Tan Stephen James. Tan Tambut. Tan Chai. Tan Watko. Tariela. Todoro. Tevez Arnolfo. Tevez Jose. Changko. Cheng. Tolentino. Tulfo Joseline. Tulfo Ralph Wendell. Tupas. Tutor. Ti. Umali. Unabia. Ungab. Valeriano. Valmayor. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Velasco. Veloso Trazon. Vergara. Versosa. Villa. Villafuerte Luis Raymond. Villafuerte Miguel Luis. Villanueva. Villar. Villaraza Suarez. Villarica. Violago. Yamsuan. Yap Christian Tel. Yap Christoferson. Yap Edvik. Yap Eric. Yu Divina Grace. Yu Jaisel Victoria. Yulo. Zamora Zamora Amparo Maria. Zamora Maria Carmen. Zamora Isabel Maria. Dubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill number eight two zero four. Advincula. Almonte. Alvarez Jose. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amatong. Atide. Barzaga. Bautista. Biliones. Bondok. Calixto. Kari. Cohuancohame. Dayanghirang. De Venesia. Duterte. Garin. Gomez. Gico. Labadlabad. Libanan. Marcoletta. Martinez. Mendoza. Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe. Nolasco. Paglas. Plato. Rama. Romero. Sactalan. Santos. Singson Richel. Tan Reynolds Michael. Tan Tambut. Tevez Arnolfo. Tolentino. Ti. Unabia. Vergara. Villafuerte Miguel Luis. Villanueva.
With two hundred and sixty-eight members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the chair declares House Bill number eight two zero four as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move with the consideration on third reading, House Bill number eight one four four, copies of which were distributed to all the members pursuant to our rules. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to please read the title of said measure and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill number eight one four four and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number eight one four four, an act defining the crime of tax racketeering and providing penalties thereof, amending for the purpose Section two five seven of the National Internal Revenue Code of nineteen ninety-seven as amended. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number eight one four four. Abalos. Abante. Abunda. Acharon. Asidre. Akop. Adyong. Advincula. Agarau. Alba. Albano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Jose. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Ang. Angara. Aquino. Aquino Magcaysay. Arbison. Arenas. Arrogansha. Asistio. Atide. Omentado. Balindong. Barba. Barbers. Baronda. Barzaga. Bascub. Bautista. Bautistalim. Benitez. Pernos. Biliones. Pirón. Bolilia. Bondok. Bungalon. Bordado. Bosita. Briones. Rosas. Buain. Bulut Bektang. Bustos. Cabredo. Cagas. Kahayon Uy. Calderon. Calixto. Campos. Kawagdan. Cardema. Kari. Castro Franz. Castro Jean. Celeste. Chan. Chato. Tua. Tungalau. Co Angelica Natasha. Co Elizaldi. Co Pilar. Cohuancohame. Cohuancohmark. Colada. Coliantes. Corvera. Cruz Ambrosio. Cruz Ricardo. Kuah. Quaresma. Tagoo. Dalipe. Dalob. Dayanghirang. Daza. De Jesus. De Venesia. Defensor. Delmar. De Los Santos. Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid. Dimaporo City Amina. Dionisio. Domingo. Duavit. Duhalii. Duterte. Di Faustino Ino. Di Faustino Michael Carlos. Di Ian Paul. Ecleyo. Emano. Enverga. Escudero. Espares. Espina. Estrella. Yudella. Farinyas. Fernandez. Ferrer Antonio. Ferrer Juliet Marie. Flores. Cortez. Frasco. Presnedi. Fuente Bella. Gallegos. Garcia Albert. Garcia Dante. Garcia Jose Arturo. Garcia Maria Angela. Garcia Pablo John. Garcia Vincent. Gardiola. Garin. Gasataya. Gato. Go Ed Christopher. Go Mark. Goles. Gomez. Gonzaga. Gonzalez Aurelio. Gonzalez Neptali. Gonzalez Sandro. Goriseta. Guico. Ginto. Gulyas. Gutierrez. Hagedorn. Jaresco. Hataman. Hernandez. Herrera. Horibata. Javier. Co Olga. Co Ricardo. Co Wilton. Cong Hun. Labadlabad. Lakson. Lakson Noel. Lagman. Lagon Daphne. Lagon Sani. Lara. Lazatin. Lee. Legarda. Libanan. Limkaytong. Loyola. Luistro. Lumayag. Makapagal Arroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Magsino. Malapitan. Mangawang. Manikiz. Manuel. Maranyon. Marcoletta. Marcos. Mariano Hernandez. Mariño. Marquez. Martinez. Mastura. Matibag. Matugas. Mendoza. Mercado. Mercado Revilla. Miguel. Momo. Morden. Nava. Nisai. Noel. Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe. Nograles Margarita. Nolasco. Huaminal. Olaso. Olivares. Ongchuan. Ordanes. Ortega. Uano Dizon. Padiernos. Paduano. Paglas. Palma. Panaligan. Pancho. Panotes. Pascual. Peña. Pimentel. Plaza. Plato. Primias Agabas. Humaren. Puno. Kimbo. Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rekto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Ilohiyo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Iada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Theodoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Tianko, Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Jocelyn, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umalii, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villafuerte Luis Raymond, Villafuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christoferson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill number 8144. Advincula, Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Atide, Barzaga, Bautista, Bondok, Kalixto, Kari, Kuhwankoh Jaime, Dayanghirang, De Venesia, Duterte, Garin, Gomez, Guiko, Libanan, Marcoleta, Martinez, Mendoza, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nolasco, Paglas, Plato, Romero, Santos, Singson Richel, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnolfo, Tieng, Tolentino, Ti, Vergara, Villafuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva. With two hundred and seventy-six members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill number 8144 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill number 7942, copies of which were given to our members pursuant to our rules. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the said title of the measure, and after call the roll of members for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill number 7942, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number 7942, an act establishing an agriculture information system in all cities and municipalities. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number 7942. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulot Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tsungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Kuhwankoh Jaime, Kuhwankoh Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhalii, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guiko, Gintu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagidorn, Haresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Li, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magcino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisai, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Ominal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padearnos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rekto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Ilohiyo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Iada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasho, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Theodoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Tianko, Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Jocelyn, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umalii, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villafuerte Luis Raymond, Villafuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christoferson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Second call for consideration and third reading of House Bill number 7942. Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Atide, Barzaga, Bautista, Bondok, Kalixto, Kari, Kuhwankoh Jaime, Dayanghirang, De Venesia, Duterte, Garin, Gomez, Guiko, Libanan, Marcoleta, Martinez, Mendoza, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnolfo, Tolentino, Ti, Vergara, Villafuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva. With two hundred and eighty members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill number 7942 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we recognize the guests of the Honorable Anna Victoria Veloso Tuazon from the Third District of Lete. The following are from UP Law Class 116 Legal Method, namely, Ms. Jaslee Bolos, Ms. Lyra Cafino, Ms. Charmaine Corrado, Ms. Isabella Incarnation, Mr. John Evangelista, Ms. Tyra Gallam, Mr. Nabil Gachalian, Mr. Jean Isip, Mr. Paul Maawa, Ms. Marie Monterrey, Ms. Teresa Rodriguez, Mr. Daniel Salita, Ms. Nicole Tadeo, Mr. Christian Tapia, and Ms. Camille Barbosa.
To the guests of Representative Anna Victoria Veloso Tuazon, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we also please recognize the guests of the Honorable Representative Ron P. Salo of the Kabayan Partilis from the Philippine Association of Salt Industry Network, Mr. Gerard Ko Konghun, Mr. Johnny A. Konghun, and Mr. Glenn John Ko Konghun.
To the guests of Honorable Representative Ron Salo, welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we also please recognize the guests of the Honorable Franz El Castro of Act Teachers Partilis. They are retired teachers of Karino High School, Ms. Cecilia Pagia, Ms. Teresita Cruz, Ms. Daisy Santos, Mr. Ángeles Villarosa, and Ms. Lilibeth Mangsal.
To the guests of Representative Franz Castro, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill 7941, copies of which were distributed to the members and pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call for the nominal voting.
Is there any objection on the motion of the Majority Leader? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill number 7941, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 7941, an act promoting the development of the bamboo industry by strengthening the Philippine Bamboo Industry Development Council, creating the Bamboo Industry Research and Development Center, providing incentives for bamboo plantation development and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill number 7941. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistyo, Atide, Aumentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulot Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tsungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Kuhwankoh Jaime, Kuhwankoh Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Dagoo, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhalii, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Frasco, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Giko, Gintu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagidorn, Haresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Li, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magcino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisai, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Ominal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuwan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padearnos. Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Juan Odizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisas Agabas, Kumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rehto, Rehensha, Rimulia, Rivilya Brian, Rivilya Ramondjolo, Reyes, Brillo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Si Adamari, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Saqdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salceda, Sali, Salimbahon, Salo, Sálvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Sinson Richel, Sinson Ronald, Sinson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horashu, Swansing Micaela Angela, Suarez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Kit Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Tijodoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Tianco, Teng, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umalii, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Berzosa, Villia, Villio Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villio Fuerte Miguel Luis, Vilanueva, Villiar, Villiaraza Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopherson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jayzel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri. Second call for consideration and third reading of House Bill number 7941. Almonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Atide, Barzaga, Bautista, Bondok, Carey, Kowanko Jaime, Dayanghirang, Duterte, Garin, Gomez, Libanan, Marcoletta, Martinez, Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnolfo, Tolentino, Ti, Vergara, Villio Fuerte Miguel Luis, Vilanueva.
With two hundred and eighty-two members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill number 7941 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we recognize the guests of the Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Giromualdes, Representatives Ramon Guico Jr., Jordyn Jesus, JJ Romualdo, and Raoul Boboy Tupas. We have today the AFP Uniform Personnel. We have Lieutenant General Charlton Shan M. Gerland, Major General Ray B. Alemania, Major General Fernando M. Rayeg, Major General Ferdinand T. Barandon, Brigadier General Patriarch Robinson, Brigadier General Leo Edward Y. Carranto, Brigadier General Orlando O. Edralin, Brigadier General Patricio Ruben Amata, Brigadier General Alvin V. Luzon, Brigadier General Ulpiano T. Olarte, Commodore Wario C. Mariah, Brigadier General Michael G. Sampson, Brigadier General Amado V. De La Paz, Brigadier General Aldrin S. Anani, Brigadier General Michelle B. Aniron Jr., Brigadier General Antonio C. Rota Jr., Brigadier General Donald M. Gomiran, Brigadier General Erwin A. Alea, Brigadier General Erwin Victoriano A. Machica III, and Brigaden Maria Dolores M. Lim. Also, we have Colonel Arturo Tugade, former DOJ Secretary. We have Colonel Juny J. R. Businos, Colonel Christian James P. Vigno, Colonel Joe Boy D. Kinbipan, Colonel Franco Rafael H. Alano, Colonel Ariel B. Calahi, Colonel Wendell Frederick Rebong, Colonel Manaros M. Buransing II, Colonel Antonio V. Burton, Colonel Renante D. Besa, Colonel Abdalalhim H. Sakilan, Colonel Romel S. Valencia, Colonel Bernard F. Pelobello, Colonel Albert C. Flores, Colonel Ben Domingo III, Colonel Cyril P. Dawaten, Colonel Ali A. Aleho, Colonel Virginia N. Ang, Colonel Marites L. Agliam, Colonel Raymundo C. Picot Jr., Colonel Melanie I. Sumera, Colonel Melgival B. Hilau, Colonel Emerson V. Sumilang, Colonel Reynaldo S. Galan, Colonel Noli P. Canashiro, Colonel Justito Jasper M. Pecson, Colonel Tante D. Angagao, Colonel Samuel C. Nadala Jr., Colonel Janet V. Lorenna, Colonel Archie A. Arres, Colonel Arnold L. Gasalatan, Colonel Alan Van L. Estrera, Colonel Leo I. Katipay, Colonel Alan Edgar V. Orbito, Colonel Julito P. Garay, Captain James Francis Lugto, Captain Hernani DC. Lanis, Captain Aldrin Gakusan, Captain Benjo F. Negranza, Captain Rol Didin Chris A. Serio, Brigadier General Benjamin D. Itau, Captain Julian B. Delor, Captain Randy C. Apitana, Captain Steve Morata, Captain Joseph Galvez, Colonel Tino P. Maslan, Captain Clyde B. Domingo, Captain Dexter P. Diego, Captain Ronald M. Pascua, Captain Alexander P. Ballurin, Captain James S. Ramon Jr., Colonel Alan Angelo C. Tolentino, Colonel Omar Fridscaan S. Alpa, Colonel Rene H. Sevilla, Colonel John Paul David S. Trahano, Colonel Maxuan M. Karingal, Colonel Claro M. Tamayo Jr., Colonel Alfred C. Sarmiento, Colonel Leopoldo I. Acerden IV, Colonel Jeric A. Doliente, Colonel Richard B. Sumera, Colonel Crisanto J. Naing, Colonel Jatoni Luke D. De Quiroz, Colonel Anselmo A. T. II, Colonel Williamor B. Costales Jr., Colonel Dennis Romel R. Hindang, Colonel Maribel B. Manangbao, Colonel Harold V. Hernando, Colonel Glenn S. Piquero, Colonel Jose Mari J. Sardeng, Colonel Encarnita Olivia A. Pérez, Colonel Melchor Domingo P. Albarasin, Colonel Arthur P. Tugade, Colonel Josephine Aleho.
That's it, Mr. Chair. Mr. Speaker. To the guests of our Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Giromualdes, Representative Ramon's Guico Jr., Jordán Jesus JJ Romualdo, and Raoul Boboy Tupas, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration and third reading of House Bill 7819, capes of which were distributed to the members.
Yes, what is the pleasure of the honorable gentleman?
May I just make a short statement if I may, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, please proceed.
I just would like to thank the top brass of the Armed Forces in being here, and thank you for visiting the House of Representatives. I'm just wondering, Mr. Speaker, who are left in the headquarters of the Armed Forces?
The Speaker concurs with the Honorable Representative in his gratitude. Again, a big round of applause for our guests. Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration and third reading-
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill 7819, capes of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 7819, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7819, an act declaring the maritime zones under the jurisdiction of the Republic of the Philippines. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7819. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Jose, Alvarez, Mercedes, Alvarez, Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino, Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista, Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bonoc, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut, Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro, Franz, Castro, Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Huang Ko Jaime, Ko Huang Ko Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Quaresma, Dagoak, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Delos Santos, Dimaporo, Muhammad Kali, Dimaporo, City, Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino, Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinias, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galleos, García Albert, García Dante, García Jose Arturo, García Maria Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Gólez, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Harresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Honghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Li, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkaychong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan, Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano, Dizon, Padearnas, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisia, Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Ylohyo, Rodríguez, Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes, Yada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sali, Salimbangan, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson, Rachel, Singson, Ronald, Singson, Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing, Horacio, Swansing, Micaela Angela, Suarez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez, Arnolfo, Tevez, Jose, Tiyango, Tiyang, Tolentino, Tulfo, Joseline, Tulfo, Ralph, Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, T. Umal, Unabia, Unga, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Velasco, Velozotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villa Razas Suarez, Villa Rica, Violago, Yamsuwan, Yap, Cristiante, Yap, Christoferson, Yap, Edvik, Yap, Eric, Yu, Divina Grace, Yu, Jazel Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7819. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Barzaga, Bautista, Bondok, Kari, Ko Huang Ko Jaime, Dayanghirang, Duterte, Garin, Gómez, Libanan, Marcoleta, Martínez, Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez, Arnolfo, Tolentino, T., Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Miguel Luis, Villanueva.
With 284 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill Number 7819 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill 7754, capes of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 7754, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7754, an act reverting fish ponds which have been unutilized or abandoned for a period of three years to forest lands, amending for the purpose Section 43 of Presidential Decree Number 705, otherwise known as the Revised Forestry Code of the Philippines. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7754. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Jose, Alvarez, Mercedes, Alvarez, Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino, Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista, Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut, Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro, Franz, Castro, Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Huang Ko Jaime, Ko Huang Ko Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Quaresma, Dagoak, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Delos Santos, Dimaporo, Muhammad Kali, Dimaporo, City, Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino, Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinias, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galleos, García Albert, García Dante, García Jose Arturo, García Maria Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Gólez, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Harresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Li, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkaychong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan, Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano, Dizon, Padearnas, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisia, Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Ylohyo, Rodríguez, Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes, Yada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sali, Salimbangan, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson, Rachel, Singson, Ronald, Singson, Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing, Horacio, Swansing, Micaela Angela, Suarez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez, Arnolfo, Tevez, Jose, Tiyango, Tiyang, Tolentino, Tulfo, Joseline, Tulfo, Ralph, Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, T. Umal, Unabia, Unga, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Velasco, Velozotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villa Razas Suarez, Villa Rica, Violago, Yamsuwan, Yap, Cristiante, Yap, Christoferson, Yap, Edvik, Yap, Eric, Yu, Divina Grace, Yu, Jazel Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call for consideration and third reading of House Bill Number 7754. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Barzaga, Bautista, Bondok, Kari, Ko Huang Ko Jaime, Dayanghirang, Duterte, Garin, Gómez, Libanan, Marcoleta, Martínez, Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez, Arnolfo, Tolentino, T., Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Miguel Luis, Villanueva.
With 284 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill Number 7754 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we acknowledge the guests of Minority Leader Marcelino C. Libanan and Honorable J. C. Abalos of Four Peace Partilis. Here with us today are the Federación ng mga barangay kagawa ng Pilipinas, headed by the National President, Mr. Michael D. Mayol, Nestor T. Reyes, the National Executive Vice President, Ms. Maria Cristina C. S. Mendoza, National VP for Internal, Ms. Fedelisa M. Nasin, National VP External, Mr. John Gerald T. Abad, National VP for NCR, Mr. Melvin Dictado, National VP for Luzon, Lindon Guba, National VP Visayas, Joselito Dandoi Ongkay, National VP for Mindanao, George Bisnar, National Secretary General, Keisha Colleen Ancheta, National Assistant Secretary General, Mary Joan M. López, National Treasurer, Bong Flores, National PRO, Mariethes Deleste, National Secretariat, Micaela Mendoza, National Secretariat, and Mr. John Lester Parungau, National Secretariat.
To the guests of our minority leader Marcelino Libanan and Representative Abalos, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill 451, capes of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, the motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 451, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 451, an act encouraging corporate social responsibility, providing incentives therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 451. Abalos, Abante, Abunta, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Jose, Alvarez, Mercedes, Alvarez, Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino, Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asisto, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista, Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut, Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro, Franz, Castro, Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Huang Ko Jaime, Ko Huang Ko Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Urquardo, Kuak, Quaresma, Dagoak, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, Delos Santos, Dimaporo, Muhammad Kali, Dimaporo, City, Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino, Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinias, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galleos, García Albert, García Dante, García Jose Arturo, García Maria Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Gólez, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Sandro, Goriseta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Harresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Honghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Daphne, Lagonsani, Lara, Lazatin, Li, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkaychong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes. Please proceed.
This representation votes no to House Bill 451, and I would like to explain my vote later. Thank you.
It's noted. Please proceed.
Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan, Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olasco, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano, Dizon, Padearnas, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisia, Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Ylohyo, Rodríguez, Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romero, Romualdes, Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes, Yada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sali, Salimbangan, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson, Rachel, Singson, Ronald, Singson, Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing, Horacio, Swansing, Micaela Angela, Suarez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez, Arnolfo, Tevez, Jose, Tiyango, Tiyang, Tolentino, Tulfo, Joseline, Tulfo, Ralph, Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, T. Umal, Unabia, Unga, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Velasco, Velozotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte, Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villa Razas Suarez, Villa Rica, Violago, Yamsuwan, Yap, Cristiante, Yap, Christoferson, Yap, Edvik, Yap, Eric, Yu, Divina Grace, Yu, Jazel Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 451. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Barzaga, Bautista, Bondok, Kari, Ko Huang Ko Jaime, Dayanghirang, Duterte, Garin, Gómez, Libanan, Marcoleta, Martínez, Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez, Arnolfo, Tolentino, T., Vergara, Villa Fuerte, Miguel Luis, Villanueva.
With 283 members voting in the affirmative, three in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill Number 451 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that you recognize the Honorable Manuel to explain his vote.
Yep. Honorable Manuel is recognized, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This representation votes no to House Bill 451, or the bill providing incentives for corporate social responsibility for the following reasons. First, the passage of this bill may allow corporations to use CSR events and activities to use CSR events and activities as a means of improving their public image while still exploiting workers in the Philippines. This means that corporations can continue to underpay workers and subject them to poor working conditions while using CSR as a cover-up for their unethical practices. Second, there is a lack of clear regulatory framework in the bill that can prevent the use of CSR for corrupt practices and tax loopholes. This can lead to corporations using CSR as a means of evading taxes and engaging in patron clientilism. Last, what we need from corporations is for them to be accountable for the damage they do to our people and the environment. This includes paying workers a livable wage, providing suitable benefits, and ensuring safe and healthy working conditions. It also means holding corporations liable for the pollution, emission, and waste that their production causes. We should not give corporations the impression that CSR is a substitute for fulfilling their responsibilities to their workers and the environment. So for those three reasons, Mr. Speaker, I vote no to House Bill 451. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before you proceed, may I request that we acknowledge the guest of the Honorable Peter B. Miguel from the Second District of South Cuto Batu. They are Counselor Josh Regis Israel and Counselor Swain A. Degroot of the Municipality of Tibuli.
To the guests of Representative Peter Miguel, welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I also request that we acknowledge the guests of this representation from a district from the Municipality of Pola, Province of Oriental Mindoro, the town affected by the oil spill incident. They are Mayor Jennifer M. Cruz, Vice Mayor Marvin T. Rivera, and Municipal Councilors Elizaldi Visige, Lysander Fetisanan, Jeremy Lincallo, Jerry Fetisanan, Augustine Rivas, Wilson Sotelo, Soleto, Romel Bathan, and Celso Oliveros.
To the guests of our honorable Majority Leader, welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you very much, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 198, printed copies of which were distributed to the members of the House pursuant to the rules of the House. And for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the role for nominal voting. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 198 and thereafter call the role for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 198, An Act Providing for the Revised Warehouse Receipts Law of the Philippines. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 198. Abalos Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansya, Asistyo, Atide, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Bigtang, Bustos Cabredo, Kagas Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Huancohaimi, Ko Huancohmar, Kolada, Kolientes Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, de Jesus de Venecia, Defensor, Del Mar, De Los Santos, Dimoporo, Muhammad Khalid, Dimoporo, Siti Amina, Junicio Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D. Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Enverga, Escudero Espares, Espina Estrella, Yudella, Farinias, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fentevelia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Goed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Nepali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goreseta, Gwiko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Saney, Lara, Lasatin, Liligarda, Libanan, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Ouanodizon, Padearnos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisas Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Rivilla Brian, Rivilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelohio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Ieda Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangan, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maica, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Theodore, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Tianco, Tian, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, T. Umalie Unabia Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villaferte Luis Raymond, Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuwan, Yap Chris Chantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 198. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Barzaga, Bondok, Kari, Ko Huancohaimi, Dayanghirang, Duterte, Garin, Gomez, Libanan, Marcoleta, Martinez, Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnulfo, Tolentino, T. Vergara, Villaferte Miguel Luis.
With 287 members voting in the affirmatives, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill Number 198 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8278, printed copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the role for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 8278 and thereafter call the role for nominal voting.
House Bill 8278, An Act Revitalizing the Salt Industry, Creating a Comprehensive Plan for Its Development, Providing Incentives to Salt Farmers, Producers, and Exporters, and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8278. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansya, Asistyo, Atide, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Bigtang, Bustos Cabredo, Kagas Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Huancohaimi, Ko Huancohmar, Kolada, Kolientes Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza de Jesus de Venecia, Defensor, Del Mar, De Los Santos, Dimoporo, Muhammad Khalid, Dimoporo, Siti Amina, Junicio Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D. Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina Estrella, Yudella, Farinias, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fentevelia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Goed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Nepali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goreseta, Gwiko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Saney, Lara, Lasatin, Liligarda, Libanan, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Ouanodizon, Padearnos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisas Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Rivilla Brian, Rivilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelohio, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Ieda Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangan, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maica, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Theodore, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Tianco, Tian, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, T. Umalie Unabia Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villaferte Luis Raymond, Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuwan, Yap Chris Chantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8278. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Barzaga, Bondok, Kari, Ko Huancohaimi, Dayanghirang, Duterte, Garin, Gomez, Libanan, Marcoleta, Martinez, Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnulfo, Tolentino, T. Vergara, Villaferte Miguel Luis.
With 287 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill Number 8278 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8203, printed copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the role for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 8203 and thereafter call the role for nominal voting.
House Bill 8203, An Act Modernizing the Bureau of Immigration by Defining Its Powers and Functions, Further Professionalizing Its Organization, Upgrading the Compensation and Benefits of Its Officials and Employees, and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8203. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansya, Asistyo, Atide, Amentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Bigtang, Bustos Cabredo, Kagas Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Kalixto Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Huancohaimi, Ko Huancohmar, Kolada, Kolientes Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza de Jesus de Venecia, Defensor, Del Mar, De Los Santos, Dimoporo, Muhammad Khalid, Dimoporo, Siti Amina, Junicio Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D. Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Enverga, Escudero Espares, Espina Estrella, Yudella, Farinias, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fentevelia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Goed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Nepali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goreseta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Honorable Lagman, you're recognized.
I vote yes and may I explain my affirmative vote later.
Yes, that is noted. Secretary General, please proceed.
Lagon Daphne, Lagon Saney, Lara, Lasatin, Liligarda, Libanan, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Waminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Ouanodizon, Padearnos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisas Agabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Rivilla Brian, Rivilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelohio, Rodriguez Rufus.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Honorable Rodriguez, you're recognized.
I vote yes for the modernization of the Bureau of Immigration and I request to be called after the voting process to explain my vote. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, sir. That is noted. Secretary General, please proceed.
Roman, Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Ieda Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangan, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Talyado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maica, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Theodore, Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Chanco, Tian, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, T. Umalie Unabia Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villaferte Luis Raymond, Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuwan, Yap Chris Chantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8203. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Barzaga, Bondok, Kari, Ko Huancohaimi, Dayanghirang, Duterte, Garin, Gomez, Libanan, Martinez, Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnulfo, Tolentino, T. Vergara, Villaferte Miguel Luis.
With 287 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill number 8203 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Edsel Lagman to explain his vote.
The Honorable Edsel Lagman is recognized. Please proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The law on the Bureau of Immigration is of Jurassic vintage. It was enacted during the Commonwealth period under Commonwealth Act Number 613, otherwise known as the Philippine Immigration Act of nineteen forty, or eighty-three years ago. Mr. Speaker, there is urgent need to modernize the Bureau of Immigration to make it comparable with similar agencies in other countries and place it in a step with advances in communications and technology. It is also of critical immediacy to professionalize the personnel of the Bureau of Immigration and increase their basic salaries to incentivize immigration officers and other employees of the Bureau who perform frontline services in various airports and seaports nationwide, even during weekends and holidays. The bills on the modernization of the Bureau of Immigration and the upgrading of its personnel have been pending in the Congress for many years now. The importance of the Bureau of Immigration cannot be overemphasized. Its offices and personnel give the first glimpse of the country to tourists and foreign arrivals. It does not only protect the security and safety of the country from undesirable aliens and those with derogatory records. It is also one of the principal agencies responsible in the implementation of Republic Act Number 92008, or the Anti-Trafficking and Persons Act of 2003. It is also in charge of the citizens' right to travel under the Constitution. It is an enduring partner of the Department of Tourism in the country's continuing campaign for more tourist arrivals, which have been significantly increasing in numbers. It is a revenue-generating agency. In 2023, its projected income is 7.021 billion, way above its current appropriation of 1,614,583,000. I vote yes to House Bill Number 8203 on the Bureau of Immigration Modernization Act. Since the fourth Congress, I have consistently authored or co-authored similar bills on the modernization of the Bureau of Immigration. Consequently, Mr. Speaker, I respectfully manifest to be included as co-author of House Bill Number 8203. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, sir. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Rufus Rodríguez to explain his vote.
The Honorable Rufus Rodríguez is recognized.
Thank you, our dear Speaker and our Majority Leader. I was Immigration Commissioner under the term of President Erap Estrada from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and one. When I became Congressman in two thousand and seven, that is about how many years ago, I immediately filed a bill to modernize the Bureau of Immigration. And because really, it is Jurassic, it is obsolete, Commonwealth Act 613, nineteen forty. But unfortunately, we have not been able to really push this and have this approved by the Senate. We also had before an approval, but in the Senate, the senators left on this bill. Now, we are here, and again, we are very thankful that the leadership has already included this for third reading, and the Speaker has made this in the list of those legislative agenda coming from the President and led up. Now, what do we, what will we achieve here? First, we are going to reorganize the staffing pattern and the officers of the Bureau of Immigration, make them attune to public service. And then we upgrade their salaries to make them, give incentives for them to work well and to be able to serve our interests of the nation. And then it has modernized, Mr. Speaker, the different visas and permits. These are all the kinds of visas before, there are now new kinds of visas that are envisioned by this bill. And so therefore, we say that this is long overdue. But however, Mr. Chairman, I say vote yes. Let me cite. There are certain actions of the Bureau of Immigration that does not follow the constitutional right to travel of every Filipino. They still have this, you know, inspection and trying to prevent offloading passengers because there are many other reasons. You know, immigration is the wind that will push everyone coming in if they are legal, and immigration is the wall that stops foreigners who come in for nefarious reasons or with criminal records. The Bureau of Immigration, Mr. Speaker, should allow the departure of all Filipinos who wish to travel abroad if they have a visa properly given. The immigration now is trying to play God by saying, right there in the immigration counters, they will say, "Oh, your visa is a tourist visa, but you look like a domestic." So where is your show money? My goodness, show money. Where is your round trip ticket? So many requirements. I was in immigration at the first. It was a good policy to prevent, you know, our Filipinos to be, to have problems abroad. But after being in immigration, Mr. Chairman, I believe, when I came out with a, early in my term, I came out with a memorandum that the right of travel of Filipinos are sacrosanct. And if they are able to produce a visa properly and validly issued by the embassies and consulate here in the Philippines, they should be allowed to go. They know that need to look at the appearance of the passenger. They do not, they cannot order them to show, to give, to show them show money, make it having a secondary inspection. No. I have already experienced that, and that is a bad policy. It's just very important that our inter-agency against human trafficking are able to give to the, to the authorities, who are the syndicates in the Philippines in human trafficking, and make sure that they cannot victimize our Filipinos leaving for abroad. Secondly, Mr. Speaker, those who are working abroad, they come here and they have to get an overseas clearance certificate that they have still contracts abroad. Unnecessary, Mr. Speaker, I have been abroad, I talked to our, of our overseas Filipinos. It takes so much time. Na matayan na nga, somebody has died in the fire, they want to go home. They have difficulty because the, our, our, our POA and our Department of Bragat Workers make it hard for them. There has to be another certificate of employment. They're already there, and they're already coming here. They have still a valid visa, working visa there. So all of this, Mr. Chairman, we have to make sure that our Filipinos have the chance to work abroad and to be able to receive good compensation as they give, render good service to our, in foreign lands. And with that, Mr. Speaker, I would like to say that with these two messages. First, let us have our Filipinos leave. Secondly, those returning should be able to go back without need of a certificate of overseas employment. Make it easier for our heroes. They are heroes, and then we're making it difficult for them. And so therefore, strengthen our anti-human trafficking. And therefore, with those particular suggestions, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, I vote yes for the Bureau of Immigration for this particular bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8214, printed copies of which have been distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 8214 and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 8214, an act establishing the, in the city of Lucena, Province of Quezon, a general hospital to be known as the Lucena City Hospital, and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8214. Avalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Albano, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbizon, Arenas, Arrogancia, Assisto, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista, Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Rosas, Buhain, Bulut, Biktang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayun Uy, Calderon, Calisto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Kwankohaimi, Kwankomar, Kolaada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Koresma, Dago, Akdalipe, Dalog, Dayangirang, Daza de Jesús de Venezuela, Defensor Del Mar de Los Santos, Demoporo Mohamed Kali, Demoporo Siti Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhalidoterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D Ian Paul, Ecleyo Imano, Inverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Faríneas, Fernández, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fontebelia, Galios, García Albert, García Dante, García Jose Arturo, García María Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Gordiola, Garin, Gasetaya, Gato, Christopher, Go Mark, Goles Gomez, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Sandro, Goreseta, Guíco, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara Lassatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limcaitchong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsina, Malapitan, Mangawang, Maniquis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Nogralas Juan Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Omenal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwanodison, Padearnos, Paduano Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza Plato, Primisas Agabas, Pumaren Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Rivilla Brian, Rivilla Ramonjolo, Reyes, Rilio Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez Yelohio, Rodríguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yede Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagr Barías, Akaluran, Salsera, Sally Salimbangan, Salo, Salvames Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihán, Solon, Suans, Swansing Horashos, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maica, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Chan, Otien, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutorti, Umale, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villaferte Luis Raymond, Villaferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villago, Yamsuan, Yap, Chris Chantel, Yap, Christopher Son, Yap, Edvik, Yap, Eric, Udivina Grace, UJ, Zel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 8214. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Barzaga, Bondok, Carey, Kwankohaimi, Dayangirang, Deterte, Garin, Gómez, Martínez, Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnolfo, Tolentino, Ti, Vergara, Villaferte, Miguel Luis. With two hundred and eighty-eight members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill Number 8214 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of all local bills pertaining to ecotourism zones and tourism destinations. House Bill 7549, House Bill 8033, House Bill 8034, House Bill 8035, House Bill 8036, House Bill 8063, House Bill 8064, House Bill 8065. Capes, for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bills 7549, 8033, 8034, 8035, 8036, 8063, 8064, and 8065, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 7549, an act declaring Sinulum Falls and Bulau Cold Spring, located in Barangay San Isidro, Municipality of Talakag, Province of Bukidnon, as ecotourism destination. House Bill 8033, an act declaring Barangay Bukhari in the Municipality of Layon, Province of Iloilo, an ecotourism zone. House Bill 8034, an act declaring the twin islands of San Pedro and San Pablo, located in the Municipality of Hinunangan, Province of Southern Leyte, as ecotourism zones. House Bill 8035, an act declaring the Tagbak Marine Park, located in the Municipality of Liloan, Province of Southern Leyte, an ecotourism zone. House Bill 8036, an act declaring Barangay Napantao in the Municipality of San Francisco, Province of Southern Leyte, an ecotourism zone. House Bill 8063, an act declaring the province of Misamis Oriental, a tourism development area. House Bill 8064, an act declaring the Kagayan de Oro River and its immediate environs, located in Kagayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, a cultural heritage and tourism zone. House Bill 8065, an act declaring Migtug Sok Falls, located in Barangay FS Kataniko, Kagayan de Oro City, Province of Misamis Oriental, an ecotourism site. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 7549, 8033, 8034, 8035, 8036, 8063, 8064, and 8065. Avalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Albano, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbizon, Arenas, Arrogancia, Assisto, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista, Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Rosas, Buhain, Bulut, Biktang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayun Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tungalaw, Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Kwankohaimi, Kwankomar, Kolaada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Koresma, Dago, Akdalipe, Dalog, Dayangirang, Daza de Jesús de Venezuela, Defensor Del Mar de Los Santos, Demoporo Mohamed Kali, Demoporo Siti Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhalidoterte, Difostino Ino, Difostino Michael Carlos, D Ian Paul. Ecleyo, Imano, Inverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Faríneas, Fernández, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fontebelia, Galios, García Albert, García Dante, García Jose Arturo, García María Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Gordiola, Garin, Gasetaya, Gato, Goed, Christopher, Go Mark, Goles Gomez Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Sandro, Goreseta, Guíco, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne. Lagon Sunny, Lara Lassatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limcaitchong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsina, Malapitan, Mangawang, Maniquis, Manuel Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Omenal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwanodison, Padearnos, Paduano Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña. Pimentel, Plaza Plato, Primisas Agabas, Pumaren Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Rivilla Brian, Rivilla Ramonjolo, Reyes, Rilio Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez Yelohio, Rodríguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Yede Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagr Barías, Akaluran, Salsera, Sally Salimbangan, Salo, Salvames Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihán, Solon, Suans, Swansing Horashos, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maica, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Tianko, Otien, Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutorti, Umale, Unabia, Ungab, Valeriano Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villaferte Luis Raymond, Villaferte Miguel Luis, Tulpa, 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 Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7549, 8033, 8034, 8035, 8036, 8063, 8064, and 8065. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Barzaga, Bondok, Carri, Kuwangkohaimi, Dayang Hirang, Duterte, Gomez, Martinez, Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnolfo, Tolentino, T, Vergara, Villaferta, Miguel Luis.
With two hundred and eighty-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bills Numbers 7549, 8033, 8034, 8035, 8036, 8063, 8064, and 8065 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader?
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of all local bills pertaining to land transportation offices, House Bills Number 3401, 8152, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bills Numbers 3401, 8152, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 8, House Bill 3401, an act establishing a district office of the land transportation office in the Municipality of Pototan in the third legislative district of the Province of Iloilo and appropriating funds therefore. And House Bill 8152, an act converting the Raspinas Land Transportation, Transportation Office, LTO, Licensing Extension Office into a regular LTO Licensing Center and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bills, House Bill Numbers 3401 and 8152: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magseisai, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber, Barber, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Rosas, Buahain Bulut, Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayun Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carri, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Coangelica Natasha, Coelizaldi, Copilar, Kuwangkohaimi, Kuwangkohmark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Kuaresma, Dagok, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayang Hirang Daza, Jesus, Defensa, Defensor Del Mar, De Los Santos, Demoporo, Mohamed Kali, Demoporo, City Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhalid, DuTerte, Difostino, Ino, Difostino, Michael Carlos, D Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Inverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fontebelia, Galleos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose, Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasetaya, Gato, Goed, Christopher, Go Mark, Goles Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalo Aurelio, Gonzalo Neptali, Gonzalo Sandro, Goreseta, Gico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Co Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Dagman, Lagun Daphne, Lagun Sunny, Lara, Lasatini, Ligada, Liban, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Luisro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maseda, Madrona, Magcino Malapitan, Mangawang Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwanodizon, Padianos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel Plaza, Plato, Premis Agabas, Pumarin Puno, Kimbo, Ramarreto, Rehencia, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Yolo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes, Yada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salceda, Salimbahon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela, Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Michael, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tan Riera, Teodoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Chang, Chang, Changco, Chang, Tolentino, Tulfo, Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulpa, 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 Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 3401 and 8152: Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Barzaga, Bondok, Carri, Kuwangkohaimi, Dayang Hirang, Duterte, Gomez, Martinez, Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnolfo, Tolentino, T, Vergara, Villaferta, Miguel Luis.
With two hundred and eighty-nine members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bills Numbers 3401 and 8152 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader?
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of all local bills pertaining to marine hatcheries. House Bill Numbers 7101, 8119, 8120, 8121, 8122, 8123, 8124, 8125, 8126, 8127, 8128, and 8, uh, 8129, 8130, 8131, and 8132, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. And for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bills Numbers 7101, 8119, 8120, 8121, 8122, 8123, 8124, 8125, 8126, 8127, 8128, 8129, 8130, 8131, and 8132, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7101, an act establishing a multi-species marine hatchery in the city of Sagay, Province of Negroes Occidental and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8119, an act establishing a multi-species fish hatchery and research center in the Municipality of Naic, Province of Cavite and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8120, an act establishing a central multi-species marine hatchery in the Municipality of Hinunangan, Province of Southern Leyte and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8121, an act establishing a satellite multi-species marine hatchery in the Municipality of Pintuyan, Province of Southern Leyte and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8122, an act establishing a multi-species marine hatchery in the Municipality of Santa Catalina, Province of Ilocosur and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8123, an act establishing a multi-species marine hatchery in the city of Cabadbaran, Province of Agusan del Norte and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8124, an act establishing a multi-species marine hatchery in the Municipality of Carmen, Province of Agusan del Norte and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8125, an act establishing a multi-species freshwater fish hatchery in the Municipality of Asingan, Province of Pangasinan and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8126, an act establishing a multi-species freshwater fish hatchery in the Municipality of Balonggau, Province of Pangasinan and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8127, an act establishing a multi-species freshwater fish hatchery in the Municipality of Natibidad, Province of Pangasinan and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8128, an act establishing a multi-species freshwater fish hatchery in the Municipality of Tayung, Province of Pangasinan and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8129, an act establishing a multi-species freshwater fish hatchery in the Municipality of Umingan, Province of Pangasinan and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8130, an act establishing a multi-species marine hatchery in the Municipality of Aloran, Province of Misamis Occidental and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8131, an act establishing a multi-species marine hatchery in the city of Oroqueta, Province of Misamis Occidental and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 8132, an act establishing a freshwater fish hatchery in the Municipality of San Miguel, Province of Surigao del Sur and appropriating funds therefore.
Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of the aforementioned House Bills: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magseisai, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber, Barber, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Rosas, Buahain, Bulut, Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayun Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carri, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Coangelica Natasha, Coelizaldi, Copilar, Kuwangkohaimi, Kuwangkohmark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Kuaresma, Dagok, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayang Hirang, Daza, de Jesus, de Venecia, Defensor Del Mar, de Los Santos, Demoporo, Mohamed Kali, Demoporo, City Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhalid, DuTerte, Difostino, Ino, Difostino, Michael Carlos, D Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Inverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fontebelia, Galleos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose, Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasetaya, Gato, Goed, Christopher, Go Mark, Goles Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalo Aurelio, Gonzalo Neptali, Gonzalo Sandro, Goreseta, Gico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Co Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Dagman, Lagun Daphne, Lagun Sunny, Lara, Lasatini, Lee, Legarda, Liban, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Luisro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maseda, Madrona, Magcino Malapitan, Mangawang Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Noel, Nogralas Juan Fidel Felipe, Nogralas Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwanodizon, Padianos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Peña, Pimentel Plaza, Plato, Premis Agabas, Pumarin Puno, Kimbo, Ramarreto, Rehencia, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Yolo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes, Yada Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sackdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salceda, Salis, Salimbahon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horacio, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Michael, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tan Riera, Teodoro, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Teancot, Teancot, Tolentino, Tulfo, Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulpa, 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 Second call for consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 7101, 8119, 8120, 8121, 8122, 8123, 8124, 8125, 8126, 8127, 8128, 8129, 8130, 8131, 8132. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Bondok, Carri, Kuwangkohaimi, Dayang Hirang, Duterte, Gomez, Martinez, Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnolfo, Tolentino, T, Vergara, Villaferta, Miguel Luis. With two hundred and ninety members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill Numbers 7101, 8119, 8120, 8121, 8122, 8123, 8124, 8125, 8126, 8127, 8128, 8129, 8130, 8131, and 8132 as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader?
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of all local bills pertaining to public works and highways. House Bills Number 1309, 8080, 8107, and 8133, copies of which were already distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and therefore, uh, call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Numbers 81309, 8080, 8107, 8133, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 1309, an act converting the Mayon Southeast Quadrant Road in the Municipality of Deraga in the city of Legazpi, all in the province of Albay, into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 8080, an act establishing a four-lane viaduct or bypass road in the city of San Jose del Monte, Province of Bulacan and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 8107, an act converting the road stretching from the Daang-Muharlika Junction to the barangays of Ilawod, Bagumbayan, Kiwalo, Gabawan, Tabon, Tabon Road in the Municipality of Deraga, Province of Albay into a national road and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 8133, an act creating a district engineering office in the second legislative district of De Vau City and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 1309, 8080, 8107, and 8133. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magseisai, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber, Barber, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascug, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Rosas, Buahain, Bulut, Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayun Uy, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carri, Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw, Coangelica Natasha, Coelizaldi, Copilar, Kuwangkohaimi, Kuwangkohmark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Kuaresma, Dagok, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayang Hirang, Daza, de Jesus, de Venecia, Defensor Del Mar, de Los Santos, Demoporo, Mohamed Kali, Demoporo, City Amina, Dionisio Domingo, Duavit, Duhalid, DuTerte, Difostino, Ino, Difostino, Michael Carlos, D Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Imano, Inverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fontebelia, Galleos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose, Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasetaya, Gato, Goed, Christopher, Go Mark, Goles Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalo Aurelio, Gonzalo Neptali, Gonzalo Sandro, Goreseta, Gico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagedorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Co Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Dagman, Lagun Daphne, Lagun Sunny, Lara, Lasatini, Lee, Legarda, Liban, Limkay Chong, Loyola, Luisro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maseda, Madrona, Magcino Malapitan, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legardal, Libanan, Limkay Chong Loyola, Luistro; Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda Madrona, Magsino Malapitan; Mangawang, Manikis Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura; Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia; Miguel Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita; Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwanodizon, Padearnos; Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Penya; Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencha; Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes; Rodriguez Yelojio, Rodriguez Rufus; Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdez Yada Marie; Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salceda, Salis, Salimbangon, Salo; Salvames, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan; Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horashio, Swansing Micaela Angela; Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James; Tan Tambut, Tan Shai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Theodoro; Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Tiyangko, Tiyang Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell; Tupas, Tutorti, Umali, Unabia, Onga, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso; Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia; Villia Forte Luis Raymond, Villia Forte Miguel Luis; Villia Nueva, Villiar, Villia Razza Suarez, Villia Rica, Violago, Yamsuan; Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jazel Victoria; Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second Call for Consideration on Third Reading of House Bill Numbers: 1309, 8080, 8107, and 8133. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Bondok, Kari, Ko Huangko Jaime, Dayanghirang, Duterte, Gomez, Martinez; Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnulfo, Tolentino, Ti, Vergara, Villia Forte Miguel Luis.
With two hundred and ninety members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill Numbers: 1309, 8080, 8107, and 8133, as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of all local bills pertaining to Technical Education and Skills Development Authority. House Bills Number 7839, 7904, 7905, 7906, and 7907, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. For this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Numbers: 7839, 7907, 7905, 7906, and 7907, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 7839, An Act Establishing in Barangay Kamamanan, City of Cagayan de Oro, a Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center to be known as the Cagayan de Oro City Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill 7904, An Act Establishing in the Municipality of Tagkawayan, Province of Quezon, a Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center to be known as the Tagkawayan-Quezon Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill 7905, An Act Establishing in the Municipality of Bayombong, Province of Nuevo Viscaia, a Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center to be known as the Bayombong-Nuevo Viscaia Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill 7906, An Act Establishing in the Municipality of Minalabak, Province of Camarinesur, a Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center to be known as the Minalabak-Camarinesur Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center and Appropriating Funds Therefore. House Bill 7907, An Act Establishing in the Municipality of Labangan, Province of Zamboanga del Sur, a Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center to be known as the Zamboanga del Sur Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Provincial Training and Assessment Center and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Roll Call of Members in Consideration on Third Reading of House Bill Number: 7839, 7904, 7905, 7906, and 7907. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte; Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Angangara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay; Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Asistio, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskuk; Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron; Bolilia, Bondok, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut Bigtang, Bustos Cabredo; Kagas, Kahayun Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari; Castro Franz, Castro Jane, Celeste Chan, Chato, Chua, Chungalaw; Ko Angelika Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar; Ko Huangko Jaime, Ko Huangko Mark, Kolada, Kolientes Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo; Kuak, Koresma, Dagoak, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Del Mar, De Los Santos, Demoporo Muhammad Kali, Demoporo Siti Amina; Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos; Di Ian Paul; Ekleyo Emano Inverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farinas; Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fontebelia, Galayos; Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent; Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Nepali, Gonzalez Sandro; Goreseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagidorn, Haresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier; Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman; Lagon Daphne, Lagonsani, Lara; Lazatin, Lee, Legardal, Libanan, Limkay Chong Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda Madrona, Magsino; Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariano Hernandez, Marino; Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado; Mercado Revilia, Miguel Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita; Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwanodizon, Padearnos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho; Panotes, Pasqual, Penya; Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumarin, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencha, Remulia; Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramon Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yelojio, Rodriguez Rufus; Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdez Yada Marie; Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salceda, Salis, Salimbangon; Salo Salvames, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rochelle; Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horashio, Swansing Micaela Angela; Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut; Tan Shai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Theodoro; Tevez Arnulfo, Tevez Jose, Tiyangko, Tiyang Tolentino, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell; Tupas, Tutorti, Umali, Unabia, Onga, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon; Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Forte Luis Raymond, Villia Forte Miguel Luis; Villia Nueva, Villiar, Villia Razza Suarez, Villia Rica, Violago, Yamsuan; Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jazel Victoria; Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second Call for Consideration on Third Reading of House Bill Numbers: 7939, 7904, 7905, 7906, and 7907. Alvarez Pantalyon, Atide, Bondok, Kari, Ko Huangko Jaime, Dayanghirang, Duterte, Gomez, Martinez, Mendoza, Nolasco, Romero, Santos; Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Tambut, Tevez Arnulfo, Tolentino, Ti, Vergara, Villia Forte Miguel Luis.
With two hundred and ninety members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, the Chair declares House Bill Numbers: 7839, 7904, 7905, 7906, and 7907, as having been approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, today being a Monday and pursuant to the rules of the House, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Chair declares a privilege hour. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Marisa Del Mar P. Magsino of the OFW party list to avail of the privilege hour.
Honorable Representative Marisa Del Mar Magsino is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you so much, Mister Speaker. Good afternoon, Mister Speaker. Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, Majority Leader Manuel Jose Dalipe, Minority Leader Marcelino Libanan, Former President Gloria Makapagal Arroyo, my esteemed colleagues. Mister Speaker, our topic for today is good governance, an antidote to corruption for the benefit of our overseas Filipino workers. Mister Speaker, corruption afflicts many aspects of the nation's civic and political life. It takes the form of graft, bribery, nepotism, embezzlement, extortion, fraud, tax evasion, lack of transparency, and sufficient enforcement of laws and government policies. Particularly, no branch or instrumentality of the government is free of it, pervading the state's police service, regulatory agencies, public services, including the judicial system. In 2022, the Philippines ranked 116th out of the 180 countries in Transparency International Corruption Perception Index, or CPI, which assesses the perceived levels of public sector corruption around the world. This means we are at the bottom of least corrupt countries. The CPI measures the available mechanisms to prevent corruption, such as enforcement mechanisms, effective prosecution of corrupt officials, red tape, laws on adequate financial disclosure, and legal protection for our whistleblowers. Transparency International measures CPI scale from zero, meaning highly corrupt, and 100 as very clean. The Philippines receive a low score of 33. Mister Speaker, corruption undermines economic development. It weakens the government's capacity to raise revenues as a result of tax evasion and rampant smuggling, resulting to lost revenues that could be channeled to developmental and social welfare projects. By inflating costs in the public procurement process, corruption undermines the quantity and quality of public spending. It also discourages foreign direct investments and development assistance to the country as donors and investors require the efficient use of funds and capital. From a socioeconomic perspective, corruption causes significant problems to the distribution of wealth in society. Mister Speaker, so great were the adverse effects of corruption that the international community recognizes it as an international crime under the United Nations Convention against corruption, and no one is insulated from it. Even our own overseas Filipino workers have become victims of extortion from immigration and custom officials. Above all, corruption corrodes our institutions which are supposed to ferment development that would allow for wider opportunities for them here in the country instead of toiling abroad. But the question is, can corruption be eradicated in the Philippines? If the government truly wants to end corruption, it must aggressively and consistently implement policies directed against it to effectively discourage its commission, if not completely contain it. Mister Speaker, I dare profound that the promotion and practice of good governance is an effective antidote to corruption in the country, and it is an advocacy of our OFW party list that it is intertwined with our fight for an inclusive, fair, and efficient government systems and frameworks for the benefits of our OFWs. But what is then a good governance? Good governance is participatory and inclusive as it ensures the people, particularly the underprivileged, the vulnerable, and the minority groups, have the opportunities to be heard and their interest considered in the decision-making processes. But it is also requires that participation is informed and organized, which means the freedom of expression and association must be respected. Good governance is consensus-oriented, necessitating mediation of different and sometimes opposing interests to reach an accord on what is best for the community and the greater good and how it can be achieved. Good governance must be effective and efficient. It means that processes and institutions must produce results within reasonable timeframes that meet the needs of society while making the best and optimal use of available resources. More importantly, good governance requires accountability of government on its decisions and actions to those who are affected, to institutional stakeholders, and to the general public. Accountability is the antithesis of impunity and abuse. However, accountability cannot be enforced without transparency and the rule of law. Transparency means that information is freely available and directly accessible to those who will be affected by the decisions and actions of the government, particularly on those involving the disposition of public funds and enforcement of rules and regulations. It also means, Mister Speaker, that information provided are not slanted or sanitized and presented in understandable forms and media. Finally, good governance requires fair legal frameworks laid down by a progressive legislator and regulatory bodies that are enforced impartially by an independent judiciary and incorruptible law enforcement agencies, a government of laws, and not of men. Admittedly, Mister Speaker, good governance is an ideal which is difficult to achieve in its entirety. However, actions must be taken to work towards this ideal with the aim of making it a reality if we are to possess a potent weapon against corruption in the country. But fortunately, Mister Speaker, we have taken positive steps in that direction. Our government has taken a two-pronged approach. First, to establish a culture of accountability among those in public service. Second, to soundly manage the nation's coffers, which includes both ensuring its prudent disbursement and the people's money is used only for the benefit of the citizens. Reforms are in place in the national government through Executive Order Number 24 issued in 2017 by President Rodrigo Roja Duterte, which reorganized the cabinet cluster system by integrating good governance and anti-corruption in the policy frameworks of all the clusters. On the other hand, Republic Act Number 11292 was passed establishing and institutionalizing the seal of good local governance for local government units, which is an incentive-based program for LGUs to uphold the practice of transparency and accountability in the use of public funds. In the judiciary, Mister Speaker, reforms have been made through the institution of the Judicial Integrity Board, or JIB, and the Corruption Prevention and Investigation Office, or CPIO. Meanwhile, the Supreme Court justices are exempted from the scope of the JIB and CPIO since justices of the High Tribunal are impeachable officers under the 1987 Constitution and could be only removed through impeachment and co-warrantion. The government-owned or controlled corporations. The government-owned or controlled corporations. Mr. Speaker, allow me to zero in on another significant sector of the government: government-owned or controlled corporations, or the G-O-C-Cs. A G-O-C-C is a government agency organized as a stock or non-stock corporation vested with functions relating to public needs, whether governmental or proprietary in nature, and owned by the government of the Republic of the Philippines. G-O-C-Cs are the state's economic tools for development by ensuring that their operations are consistent with national development policies and programs. However, Mr. Speaker, G-O-C-Cs have been notoriously controversial in the past in awarding excessive bonuses and other unjustified incentives to their officials and employees. Hence, in 2011, Republic Act Number 10149 was enacted, creating the Governance Commission for G-O-C-Cs, or the GCG, with a declared policy of ensuring that the government of G-O-C-Cs is carried out in a transparent, responsible, and accountable manner and with the utmost degree of professionalism and effectiveness. For one, the law limited the term of appointive directors of all G-O-C-Cs only for one year and may only be reappointed by our president if one obtains a performance score of above average, based on the performance criteria for appointive directors of the G-O-C-C. In response, Mr. Speaker, to the irregularities of the past, limits to compensation, per diems, allowances, and incentives of G-O-C-C officials and personnel were imposed, and incentives may only be granted if the G-O-C-C has fully paid all taxes for which it is liable and the G-O-C-C has declared and paid all the dividends required to be paid under its charter or any other laws. All G-O-C-C personnel shall be paid just and equitable wages in accordance with the principle of equal pay for work of equal value. And no G-O-C-C shall be exempt from the coverage of the compensation and position classification system developed by the GCG under the law. Moreover, Mr. Speaker, performance evaluation systems and corporate governance scorecards were also put in place, violations of which will merit the withdrawal of any incentive granted to the officers and rank-and-file employees of the G-O-C-C concerned. With these reforms, Mr. Speaker, in good governance, the governing boards of every G-O-C-C are expected to carry out its functions competently, fully accountable to the state as its fiduciary and acts in the best interest of the state and the people. In summary, Mr. Speaker, good governance can be effective antidote to corruption in the country by engaging in the following strategic reforms: One, reduction of opportunities for corruption by policy reforms and the regulation targeting corruption-prone departments and agencies. Two, strengthening the meritocracy and positive values formation in the civil service. Third, introduction of reforms on budget processes. Fourth, increase in public oversight and development of partnerships with the private sector. Fifth, enhancement of sanctions against corruption. And sixth, support to judicial reforms. These strategic reforms, Mr. Speaker, must be unified under one concerted program: a strong leadership and management structure and a robust partnership with the private sector and civil society on a one-nation and whole-of-society approach. What does it benefit to our overseas Filipino workers? Mr. Speaker, as the lone representative of the overseas Filipino workers in this august chamber, I am strongly espousing the promotion and pursuit of good governance in our public and private institutions because our OFWs will also greatly benefit from the reduction, if not eradication, of corruption in the country. In particular, Mr. Speaker, the reforms in our G-O-C-Cs are a welcome development for our OFWs as they extensively deal with G-O-C-Cs, particularly the social security system, Phil Health, Pagibig Fund, and the OFW Bank in the process of their application and deployment to their host countries. Good governance and less corruption in the various echelons of the government will also improve the delivery of welfare assistance and benefits for the families of our OFWs they leave behind, providing our OFWs a greater peace of mind and sense of confidence as they toil abroad. Institutionalizing good governance would also mean there will be no space for crooks in our agencies who are allied with illegal recruiters and human traffickers, thereby protecting our OFWs from the clause of illegal recruitment, work-related abuses, and human trafficking. Above all, good governance and less corruption could lead to greater chances of economic growth and development of the country, better employment opportunities and livelihood assistance for OFWs when they come back home, better living conditions for themselves and their families. Mr. Speaker, the word "governance" comes from the Latin word "governare", which means "to steer". Hence, a state without good governance is like a ship without a good captain and a safe route, which sails at the high seas at the mercy of the storms of the evils of corruption. My dear colleagues, with the indefatigable President Ferdinand Marcos Jr. and our very own chairperson of the Governance Commission, Justice Alex L. Queiroz, I truly believe that our country will sail in the hands of good governance lest we find ourselves sinking in the depths of corruption and oblivion. I would like to say thank you so much from the OFW party list, my esteemed colleagues. Maraming salamat po. Congresswoman Marisa Del Mar Magsino na nagsasabing, "OFW ikaw ang bida." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Marisa Del Mar Magsino to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The privileged speech of Honorable Magsino is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Maria Rachel J. Arenas of the 3rd District of Pangasinan to avail of the privilege hour.
Honorable Arenas is recognized. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, colleagues in this august chamber, good evening. I rise today on a matter of personal privilege. The World Health Organization dashboard flashes the staggering data that as of May 24, 2023, they have recorded 766,895,075 confirmed cases of COVID-19, including almost 7 million deaths in the last three years. As of 22nd May, 2023, over 13 billion of vaccine doses have been administered. As we grappled with the pandemic cost by an unknown virus that threatened not just a group of countries, but the entire human race, we realized that health is a global issue where nations could not afford to suffer, survive, or fight alone. Believing in shared goals, close cooperation, understanding, breaking down barriers, and building bridges was a matter of survival for humanity. We also realized in no uncertain terms that health cannot be ignored as an important factor in development strategies and a critical element in foreign policy and security. The trail of deaths, disease, and despair would have been so much worse had the world not quickly come together to wage a united front in the fight against this COVID-19 pandemic. We no longer think that health security is essentially trying to stop disease at the borders. It has become imperative that a wider range of action is needed to have a more strategic approach to health security and that global health security is integral to foreign policy. Globalization aided by information and communication technology has transformed the world into a more interconnected global village. The global plandemic occurring in the context of a more interconnected world has shown that the need for a coordinated response to shared public health threats has increased tremendously. As we navigate our way in a more interconnected world, global health diplomacy becomes a key strategy in our foreign policy. Through global health diplomacy, we will be able to keep countries collectively committed to improving health for everyone. Health diplomacy can also raise awareness that health is not just personal and not limited as a national issue, but has many global dimensions. Many events over the last two decades have contributed to the development of the field of global health diplomacy, such as the fight against HIV/AIDS, the spread of Ebola virus as public health emergency of international concern, climate change, which is by nature a global event that impacts on the cost of health, floods, tropical storms, drought, water scarcity, heat waves, and air pollution, health threats that impact the national security, challenges to the safety of global drug supply, the threat of emerging and reemerging infectious diseases, the need for pandemic preparedness, the shift of international health assistance to new multi-level collaborative partnership, and the emerging focus on health systems strengthening and universal health coverage. In 2008, Vikan Adams, Thomas Novotny, and Hannah Leslie described global health diplomacy as a political activity that meets the dual goals of improving health and strengthening relations among nations. While this definition implies links between public health and foreign affairs, further refinements in the definition have followed. In 2009, U.S. Assistant Secretary of State for Oceans, International Environment, and Scientific Affairs, Carrie Ann Jones, described global health diplomacy as a critical tool in foreign affairs. She encouraged diplomats in the State Department to consider public health principles along with traditional tools of commercial, military, and political diplomacy. Mr. Speaker, this humble representation believes that now is the time to call for the Philippines to use health diplomacy as a soft or smart power tool in foreign policy as well as in national security discourse. Now is the time to develop and institutionalize global health diplomacy and to create and deploy women health attaches in all Philippine embassies and consular offices. A health attache, Mr. Speaker, is key among the practitioners of global health diplomacy, who employs the tools of diplomacy and statecraft to bridge governments' public health and foreign policy objectives. A health attache is a diplomat who collects, analyzes, and acts on information concerning health in a foreign country or countries and provide critical links between stakeholders in public health and foreign affairs, including the conduct of related policy negotiations, which may encompass relevant sectors such as trade, security, and human rights. Mr. Speaker, as a major country of origin deploying millions of health and social care workers around the world, for the last six decades, it is time for the Philippines to heighten its engagement beyond negotiating and managing labor migration, beyond trade, military, agriculture, and economic negotiations. It is time for our country to prioritize the strategic engagement and promotion of global health security and safety and help facilitate global health governance. Mr. Speaker, the bill which I am about to file seeks to address the aforementioned critical gaps in Philippine diplomacy and be abreast with the developments in the global health diplomacy landscape. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Maria Rachel J. Arenas to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The privileged speech of Honorable Arenas is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Leanda P. Bolilia of the 4th District of Batangas to avail of the privilege hour.
Honorable Bolilia is recognized. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, esteemed ladies and gentlemen of this august chamber, I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege. Every year, we in Congress are confronted with the arduous task of formulating the national budget the national budget in the form of the General Appropriations Bill. This is a tremendous responsibility, one of paramount importance, for on it hinges our collective capacity for national sustainable development. And so we must ask ourselves, is there any existing mechanism for us to know whether we are allocating the right amount to the right programs and projects? Just like the master in the parable of the talents, is it not right that we ask for an accounting of how valuable resources, namely taxpayers' money, were used and what fruits they bore? My dear colleagues, when I say accounting, I do not refer merely to financial accounting and auditing. Equally important as there is, rather, I am talking about an accounting of performance. Do the programs and projects deliver the outcomes and impact they were designed for in proportion to the resources we invest in them? Should we not, as a matter of regularity or routine, ask what works, what doesn't work, and what could work better? I am talking in short of the critical need to mainstream impact evaluation. Impact evaluation, according to a international initiative for Impact Evaluation, or IIIIE, consists of analysis that measures the net change in outcomes among particular group or groups of people that can be attributed to a specific program using the best methodology available, feasible, and appropriate to the evaluation question that is being investigated into the specific context. When I talk about outcomes and impact in this context, I refer to the actual benefits felt by the Filipino people. I refer to the results that contribute to the upliftment of their quality of life, such as food security, environmental protection, job creation, education, and health and well-being, to name a few. I believe this is the yardstick by which we should measure everything we do in government. At present, the most cogent expression of this measure is the strategy framework of the Philippine Development Plan. To be clear, we should not imagine impact evaluation as a pass or fail test for programs and projects. Rather, it is a useful tool that will enable policymakers and program managers to attain a better understanding of why some programs make a huge impact while others not as much. Equipped with such knowledge, program managers will know how to fine-tune their programs to bolster components that work best and recalibrate those that work less. My esteemed colleagues, we often talk about instilling a culture of learning and evidence-based decision-making in government. Impact evaluation is a huge component in building that culture up. It closes the loop in the program management cycle, which consists of planning, budgeting, implementation, monitoring, and lastly, evaluation. Impact evaluation should inform those other phases of the program management cycle. Impact evaluation has become a global best practice in using evidence as a guide in policy and decision-making for effective national development. Allow me to cite an example to showcase the kind of evidence-based findings that we can generate using impact evaluation and how this can become useful for both policymakers and program managers alike. I am referring to a 2020 impact evaluation study sponsored by the IIIIE to assess a maternal and child healthcare program in Udepoor, India. Infant mortality and maternal death rates related to pregnancy and childbirth are among the challenges that India faces. While many factors contribute to the problem, one particular factor identified stems from the unreliable estimates from health surveillance systems. And mothers registered during pregnancy often failed to receive Palo of Healthcare simply because they disappear in the state's health registry. The program Cushy Baby was designed as a noble way to track the health of mothers and infants using digital wearable and culturally symbolic pendants. Using a mobile app, healthcare workers are able to read and update the patient's medical history without the need for prior data synchronization. By making these pieces of information easily accessible, the program managers hope to influence the behavior of mothers and healthcare workers toward better prevention and better care for mothers and children. In technical parlance, this is called the theory of change. Using a mix of methods, evaluators determine that the Cushy Baby system, a seemingly innocuous program, turned out to have significant impact in uplifting its beneficiaries' quality of life. The results gave the confidence to the local government to scale up the program to cover more villages and beneficiaries. Ladies and gentlemen, mainstreaming impact evaluation may appear costly, expensive, and laborious for government, but it is not a luxury. Rather, it is a need, especially in our country where limited resources should be judicially focused on programs that have been proven to be impactful. Indeed, it is much more costly to not do impact evaluation. If we take on this endeavor and succeed in it, I am certain that we shall make great strides in attaining our national development goals. Ultimately, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, this will redound to the benefit of the Filipino people. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Laarni Roque from the 4th District of Bukidnon for her manifestation.
Honorable Representative Roque is recognized. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, may this representation be allowed to make a short manifestation in relation to the privileged speech of the Honorable Leanda Bolilia.
Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, first of all, I would like to congratulate and commend our dear colleague from the 4th District of Batangas for a well-researched and comprehensive discussion on the critical importance of impact evaluation for the national government. I fully support and agree with the distinguished Representative Bolilia that we should instill a culture of learning and evidence-based decision-making in government. Hence, impact evaluation should be considered to be a way that our government can be more responsive to the real needs of our people on the ground. Thank you very much for this time, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now recognize Congresswoman Anne Matibag from the 1st District of Laguna for her manifestation. I so move.
Honorable Matibag is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you. Honorable Speaker, esteemed colleagues, I stand today to express my strong support for the use of impact evaluations in national development planning as discussed by our Kong, Leanda Bolilia. As we all know, development planning is a crucial aspect of our country's progress and is vital towards rational, effective budgetary formulation. Through careful planning, we ensure resources are used effectively and efficiently to achieve our goals. But planning alone is not enough. We must also evaluate the impact of our plans to ensure that we are achieving the desired outcomes. By evaluating the impact of our plans, we can identify what is working, what is not, and what could work better. This data is critical to improving our development policies and practices. In conclusion, I urge my dear colleagues to join us in supporting the use of impact evaluation in national development planning. By doing so, we can ensure that our resources are being used effectively and efficiently to achieve our goals as we build a better future for all Filipinos. Maraming salamat po at atin ang magandang bukas.
Thank you so much. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Leanda Bolilia to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The privileged speech of Honorable Bolilia is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Franz L. Castro of Act Teachers Partilis to avail of the privilege hour.
Honorable Castro, you're recognized. Please proceed.
Maraming salamat, ginong speaker. Magandang araw, ginong speaker, sa mga kapu ako kinatawan at sa ating mga kababayan. Nito lamang nakaraang araw ay pumasok na sa ating bansa si Super Typhoon Betty. At ngayon, araw lamang ay tinaas agad ang signal number two sa Batanes, Kagayan, Babuyan, at Babuyan Islands. Habang signal number one naman sa mga probinsya ng Central Luzon, South Luzon, at karamihan ng Visayas. Ang tantyan na pag-asa ay sa biyernes palalabas ng bansa ang bagyo. Ngunit palalakasin naman ito ang hanging habagat na magdudulot pa rin ng mga pag-ulan. Alam po natin na hindi bumababa sa sampu ang pumapasok na bagyo sa ating bansa kada taon. Ngunit kulang pa rin ang preparasyon at pondong nilalaan ng pambansang pamahalaan para sa kagyat na matugunan ang mga biktima ng kalamidad. Ginong speaker, madalas ay inaasa ng administrasyon na pagtulong sa mga biktima sa pamamagitan ng mga local government units, non-government organizations, or mga foundations. Sa ngayon, nagkaroon na ng preemptive evacuation na nagsimula pa noong biyernes sa Negroes Occidental, Palawan, at Pampanga dahil sila ang tinatayang makakaranas ng malakas na pag-ulan at pagbaha. Idagdag pa ang mga reyon na very prone sa pagbaha at mga landslides, tulad ng Region 1, 3, 4B, 6, 7, 8, at BARM, na siguro ay nasa evacuation centers na rin. Sa estima ng NDRRMC, nasa 1.5 million na Pilipino o aabot sa 8,000 pamilya ang maapektuhan ng Super Typhoon Betty sa mga nabanggit na reyon. Ibig sabihin, mula sa nakaraang biyernes hanggang ngayon, higit kumulang sa mga bilang na ito ang mga Pilipinong bumuhos sa mga evacuation centers sa maapektadong reyon buhat sa salantang maaring idulot at kasalukuyang idinudulot ng bagyong Betty. Malamang ay dadami pa ito sa mga darating na araw. Ang madalas na nagiging evacuation centers ay ang mga paaralan, open courts, o gym, na hindi naman nakadiseno bilang mga evacuation center. Wala po tayong existing na system para sa evacuation na kung tutusin ay year-long na kailangan dahil madalas tayong binabagyo, binabaha, na susinugan, o nililindol. Hindi pa po natin nainstitutionalize ang mga evacuation centers at wala rin pong sapat na pondon na kalaan sa mga ito. Dahil mas biglaan lang ang pagtatayo ng mga makeshift evacuation centers, walang standards na nagsisigurong ligtas at nakasasapat ang mga instrukturang ito. Walang health workers or disaster personnel na nakaalalay. Napakahalaga nito, lalo na't di patapos ang pandemya at maaring magkaroon ng hawaan sa COVID-19 sa evacuation centers. Ibig sabihin, ito ay magiging secondary disaster. Kapag ginawang evacuation centers ang mga paaralan, kung gaano katagal po ang recovery ng mga biktima, ay ganun din po katagal ang walang pasok sa mga paaralan na nakakaapekto sa pag-aaral ng ating mga estudyante. Kaya dito sa kongreso, napakaraming mga kinatawan ang naghain ng ibat-ibang bersyo ng bill para sa permanent evacuation center, per municipality and city, hindi lamang ito ngayong 19 congress, pati ng mga nakaraang kongreso pa. Mahalaga na isulong na natin ang pag-iinstitutionalize sa ating mga evacuation centers at gawin na itong permanente dahil libo-libong Pilipinong apektado at biktima ng kalamidad taon-taon, upang mailigtas din natin ang ating mga kababayan sa sakuna at hindi na lumaki pa ang mga casualties. Ginong speaker, nasa sinado na po noong Marzo 7 pa at consolidated na panokalang batas para sa permanent evacuation centers, ngunit wala pa rin itong pag-usad. Mas inuuna pang atupagin ang mga agarang pagpapalusot ng Maharika Investment Fund na tinatayang panibagong kalamidad na sasalanta sa kaban at rikuso ng mamayan. Itong mga permanent evacuation centers ang kagyat na kailangan ng ating mga mamayan upang agad nating masulusyonan ang pangangailangan ng mga biktima ng kalamidad. Kaya ginong speaker, dinidiin ng representasyong ito ang kasalukuyang kalamidad ang kagyat na pangangailangang ipasa at tuluyang isabatas ang House Bill 7354, an act establishing evacuation centers in every city and municipality and appropriating funds therefore. Kaya ginong speaker, nananawagan tayo sa ating mga counterpart sa mataas na kapulungan na sana ito po ay ipasa na. Maraming salamat po, ginong speaker, at muli, magandang araw sa ating lahat.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Franz L. Castro to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The privileged speech of Honorable Franz Castro is hereby referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we immediately transmit to the Senate the bills that we approved on third reading earlier today.
There is a motion to transmit to the Senate the House bills approved on third reading today. Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we proceed with additional reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the additional titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communication and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Additional reference of business: Messages from the Senate. Message dated May 29, 2023, informing the House of Representatives that the Senate on even date passed without amendment House Bill 7185.
To the Committee on Justice.
Message dated May 29, 2023, informing the House that the Senate on even date passed Senate Bill 2035 in which it requests the concurrence of the House of Representatives.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
Message dated May 29, 2023, informing the House that the Senate on even date passed Senate Bill 2219 in which it requests the concurrence of the House.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
Message dated May 29, 2023, informing the House that the Senate on even date passed Senate Bill 2212 in which it requests the concurrence of the House.
To the Committee on Health. Majority Leader?
Additional reference of business: Committee Reports. Committee Report Number 631, submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolution Number 1047.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 632, submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolution Number 1048.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 633, submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolution Number 1049.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Committee Report Number 634, submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolution Number 1050.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 635, submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolution Number 1051.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 636, submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Bill Number 7587.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 637, submitted by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development on House Resolution Number 1054.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 638, submitted by the Committee on Ways and Means on House Resolution Number 490 and the House Resolution Number 611.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 639, submitted by the Committee on Health and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 8426.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Big Cameral Conference Committee on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 7751 and Senate Bill Number 2212 on establishing specialty centers in hospitals under the direct supervision and control of the Department of Health. The Honorable Representative Siriaco B. Gato Jr., the Honorable Representative Anthony Rolando T. Goles, and the Honorable Representative Franz L. Castro.
Is there any objection to the motion of the Majority Leader? Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, earlier today, we approved the motion to dispense with the reading of Journal Number 76 dated May 23, 2023, and Journal Number 77 dated May 24, 2023. Now, Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 76 dated May 23, 2023, and Journal Number 77 dated May 24, 2023. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Journals Number 76 and 77 is hereby approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to elect the following members to the various committees. To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture as Member, Violago Joseph Gilbert F. To the Committee on Energy as Member, Yamsuan Bryan Raymond S. To the Committee on Games and Amusements as Vice Chairperson, Sone Mulya Crispin Diego D. Yamsuan Bryan Raymond S. To the Committee on Justice as Member, Yamsuan Bryan Raymond S. To the Committee on Public Accounts, Lara Joseph Jojo L. To the Committee on Ways and Means as Member, Violago Joseph Gilbert F. I so move.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The aforementioned members are hereby elected to their respective committees. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no business left for the day, I move to adjourn session until tomorrow, Tuesday, the 30th of May, at 3:00 p.m.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Session is adjourned until tomorrow, May 30, at 3:00 p.m.